I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please. First announcement is the announcement of Valeni Jarvis retiring after twenty nine years of service in the town's Oxbridge Fire Department in EMT, two or fire?
Paramedic.
Paramedic as well. We have a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the citizens in the board, the Board of Selectmen. And if you want to come up, Lan.
Thank you for the faithful service. I know how many times you've called out of the rock and appreciate everything that you've done for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck on the retirement.
Thank you.
Also, on the announcements, candidates' package for election are available at the clerk's office as of February 4th, 2014. Any additional information is available on the town website. The town of Oxbridge Tech's title assignment auction will be Wednesday, the 26th of February, at the Town Hall. Again, additional information is available on the town's website. Citizens Forum, any indication? Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen. I'm here to talk about what I was here, back in November, to talk about, which was the attendance of Selectman Frisk. Good to see you here, even if it is just by Skype. So I redid the numbers through the end of the year, and Mr. Frisk has a 50% attendance rating, and that includes five meetings by Skype. Best I can tell, the last time he was in this room for a regular meeting was the end of August, 2013. And best I can tell, he lives in Florida. So one of the things that I would like to do is ask Mr. Frisk if he will resign from the Board of Selectmen. It's obvious that his in attendance is not a short-term thing, that it appears to be a pattern, and this being his first year, I don't want to see it extend. I think the town really deserves to have a selectman who is at meetings physically, who is around town. I see all of you around town on a regular basis. I think it's very important to have a presence in our community by the executive board of the town. And with an election coming up, I would ask that he submit his resignation so we can give an opportunity to someone else who has more time to commit to run for that office and take his position. Thank you.
Of course, a resignation isn't necessary. He can always write to the Attorney General, get an opinion as to whether or not his attendance here is legal. And to ask for his resignation at this time is something that I think Joe should be allowed to decide, and I understand where you're coming from, but...
And this is Joe Frisk. So I know that we've had some challenges with getting me in remotely on a number of occasions, in fact, even the last meeting. So I do know that attending remotely has been difficult. I do know that my business travel does create a challenge and an obstacle for me being in person for every meeting. So I wholeheartedly, you know, appreciate your feedback, and I certainly, you know, I do appreciate you coming here. I know that we've talked before on the phone. After the last time you'd come in front of the meeting, of which I couldn't attend because I was in jury duty, but I am an Oxbridge resident who actually travels probably 60, 70% for my job currently, and I'm actually happy to be part of the board, and I'm a contributing member. And I will always be available, if the technology allows me to be available, or if I'm able to be in my home in Oxbridge, then I'll definitely be there in person. Thank you for your comments.
I don't understand what the legal aspect is.
I don't know what the legal aspect is either, Peter, but I think maybe we should find out, and I don't think Joe should be pressured into doing something which has already been approved by the Attorney General's Office. So what's the problem?
Well, I don't know, but you brought up checking with the Attorney General about the legality of it.
Well, you know, there's a spirit of the law and the law, and I think that just a clarification would be good and easier on Joe as well.
Well, as far as residence goes, a person designates their residence. You can have five houses in five different states and so forth, or countries, but you designate your residence as one place, so that's not a subject of debate. Perhaps the more important thing is whether the whole concept of remote participation is really valid, or, let me change that, expedient, because if your only source of information is the so-called reading file, that's not sufficient. You know, the fact that people around, the reason we have elected people residents of the town is that they come in daily contact with people, and so you're not completely reliant upon what...
Is that an important factor? Do you think that's very important?
Yeah.
Then maybe we should change the charter and have the town manager in town all the time.
The town manager?
That's a question, too. You could do that, you know, but you have to understand that when you do that, you limit the choices. So, you know, all those things are, you can debate them. My only point is, the Board of Selectmen, I wasn't on the Board at the time, but the Board of Selectmen apparently accepted this remote participation business, and once we do that, we accept it for the town, for any multiple-member body, and I understand we can un-accept that.
We can.
In our will, yeah. So it's something to think about.
Refer that to our Assistant Counsel here.
Well, I don't know who your Assistant Counsel is.
Jen.
Oh, okay. But anyway, it's something to think about.
Yeah.
It's certainly a valid point. I mean...
Certainly, there's been some discussion on it, Joe, I guess, because I was kind of surprised at this myself, so...
He's gone.
He's gone. Joe, get back here.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just follow up. You know, I'm appealing to Mr. Frisk...
I understand what you do.
...one-on-one, and to Peter's point, it is important. I can tell you that while the town manager does not live in town, I certainly see him at fundraisers, at Memorial Day stuff, I see him around, just as I see the superintendent of schools here on the weekends. He lives in Ashland, and he's here evenings and weekends, so it's not simply just living in town. Mr. Frisk could live in Burlville, but if he was accessible and here in town, I saw Jen over the weekend, I see Lance on a regular basis, I run into Peter, I run into you, Tim. That's the whole thing, and it is important. It's important from a present standpoint, okay? I mean, yes, you can do business, and the national law allows business to be done remotely, under certain limitations and adoptions, but there is a huge value to the community, to being here for the community, not only at the meetings, but other things going on in the community. I think presence is a big part of being a selectman in Oxbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Chair, if I could.
Yes.
I agree with Peter that the presence is very important. Joe, you'd be a great selectman if you were here. I really feel like you need to be here. I agree with everything Peter said, and it doesn't benefit the town of Oxbridge for you not to be here. You don't know, Joe, if the snowbanks are going in the center of town. You don't, it's been four degrees up here at night. It's...
I was just there a week ago, I know. I'm going to be there in two weeks. I'm home every two weeks. I'm there. I live in Oxbridge. I know. I just am not there, you know...
I understand, and Joe, you're a great asset to the board if your seat was, if you were in the seat.
I...
I really believe everything Peter said, and for the benefit of the town, if you did step down, we wouldn't have to have another reelection. I don't know what your thought process is, if you're going to stay on. This isn't conducive to a meeting, this talking to this box in your photo. It's not. It's not. I've had more than five residents come up to me at the gas station, in the deli line, a few other places, and ask me about the phantom selectmen, and joking about it, and, you know, what's up with that? And that's just the feedback that I'm getting from the community. And as far as, with all due respect, Chair, the town manager, I think it would limit who we could pick from to get a town manager. He was here all day yesterday at Pinewood Derby.
That's not true at all. Joe Zaneski went up to Oxford, and he had to have a residency there in six months, so don't say we're going to be limited. What I'm saying is that once he gets the job, he should be in town.
My point would be limited from the pool of folks that you could attract.
It wouldn't be just town residents that we'd be interviewing.
No, but at that time...
And I don't know why we're even going on to Sean, for crying out loud. He's not even involved with this. If I brought you up, Sean, inappropriately, I apologize right now.
From a legal perspective, geographic distance is illegitimate. That's one of the, that was one of the reasons, right, that the open meeting law was expanded to include remote participation. I don't know, Joe, that anyone envisioned your particular situation. I think it was, I think, you know, the spirit of it was probably supposed to be...
Right.
...more sporadic participation, but, I mean, it is, from a legal perspective, it's absolutely legal, you know, what he's doing. I mean, if he can't be here, right, it's clearly not, he's using Skype as an excuse not to attend. It's geographic distance. It's legitimate, so it's legal, and that's all the AG would say.
And let me just also point out something.
This is like permanent geographic distance. This is permanent.
Not mentioned in the law, again.
No, I know, I know.
But it's not permanent. So this is so interesting.
It is, Joe, excuse me one minute. It is if you haven't been here since August.
But I haven't been to the meeting since August. Actually, I was there, and I was at the Veterans Day Parade, where I actually, if everybody recalls that.
And you gave a great speech, and, yeah.
It's just, it's so interesting to me, so, you know, I reached out to the board, and I said, "There's a family whose home burned down in Millville, Massachusetts, so I am going to live in a hotel room and travel for two to three months so they can find a home, and that is why I was not there in September, October, and November." So I just want to point out to the board, so everyone's very clear again, that me traveling for three months towards the end of the year last year was so I could give a family a place to live that they didn't have. Let me just...
Joe, you're one of the most generous people I've ever, you've got a heart of gold.
You know, and so I have been traveling for work in a ridiculous amount, and I get it, but I would put that at precedent than being in person in this meeting. I have been in Oxbridge every weekend, multiple weeks, I'll be there in a couple weeks if everybody wants to see me. It just so happens that my travel schedule does not align up to the twice a month that it needs to for this meeting, every single time. So if it does, I will be there in person. There was no meetings in January. I tried to be a remote participant, and the technology did not allow, as it did not in multiple scenarios, and there's not much I can do if I'm in Dallas, Charlotte, California, wherever I am. So I'm here now. I hear everyone's concerns. I do appreciate your feedback, but I believe I'm doing a fine job representing the town.
And I disagree. I disagree, respectfully disagree.
And that's fine. You're right to have your own opinion.
Any other comments?
I do want to say something, because I wasn't going to bring this up, but, Joe, your house is a quarter of a mile from my house in Florida. I'm there a couple weeks a year, and I know you're down there a lot, so to say it's all because of travel is not true.
It is true, Jennifer. It's absolutely true.
Well, when was the last time you stopped into Town Hall?
Is this an inquiry, is this an inquest? Is that what you wanted, Pete? I get your point, and I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it...
I was simply making a point. You guys can discuss it as you feel necessary, now or later. I'm just making a point.
No, Jennifer, unless you have any facts, I would...
I just, we really got a small agenda tonight, so...
Really.
I'm just saying that...
We can discuss it off time.
The basic issue is, it is legal.
Right.
Okay? And we can't change that. We can change whether we want to have remote participation.
That's right.
By the way, just for the record, I think he's supposed to announce that he's attending by...
You're right, and I've been told that by Sean a couple of times already, so I apologize to let you know. I mean, it's pretty obvious that he's there. So, Joe, I don't have any problem with what you're doing, but...
And neither do the dozens of other residents I talk to on an ongoing basis.
Right.
The folks that I'm setting up scholarship funds and doing all sorts of things in town just because I'm not physically there when somebody drives by. I don't think I've ever seen any of you the 30 years I've been in town, so it's, you know, I appreciate your feedback.
Sean, you got anything? You want to say anything?
No, I just wanted to make sure, you know, the source of the law, whatever, pretty well versed in the open meeting law, so, again, Joe's participation is, you know, from the Attorney General's perspective, as Peter said, is absolutely, absolutely legal.
Can we ask Joe, how is this, is this how you plan on continuing via Skype? Do you see in the future?
If I happen to be in a hotel room or not able to be in Massachusetts, yes. I don't, I mean, I don't have much of a choice other than quitting my job.
I understand, Joe. I understand.
And let me also be fair, that when I did run, and I did not understand the level of travel that I would be asked to be committed to, so I have been trying to adjust my schedule and get so I don't have to travel as frequently, and it's been unfortunate for me that that's not been the case.
Can you see where it would be better if somebody that had a presence here could run for selectman in the upcoming election?
I absolutely see your perspective. I'm not saying I discount your perspective. I'm just saying that, you know, I appreciate the feedback, and it's good to hear the feedback.
Any further discussion, if not?
No, but announcements?
Yeah.
I have two quick ones.
I'm sorry.
At our last meeting, at some point, the subject of the future viability of the Town Hall came up, and I think the librarian was here, and she made the comment that because the Town Hall is on the Register of Historic Places, that we couldn't abandon it or sell it or something. That, of course, is not true. We own the Town Hall, and we are free to do anything with it that people want. There were no restrictions placed on the use or disposition of buildings simply because they're on the historic register, so let people be at ease on that point. The other is a serious issue. For the last several years, we've had a number of heavy snowstorms and ice storms and so forth, and for people who have property, especially woods, the destruction over these last years has been awful. Trees broken, branches broken, the forest floor is littered with broken, dead limbs and leaves and so forth, which in the summer creates a very serious fire hazard. Unfortunately, open burning is controlled by the Department of Environmental Protection, and under their rules, burning starts January 15th and ends May 1st. And they won't allow burning if there's not a certain amount of wind, because they're afraid of, you know, burdening the air with smoke. So this last weekend, Saturday and Sunday, no burning was allowed, even though it was perfect for burning. Other times, when there's two or three inches of snow, perfect, you're not allowed to burn. For most people, they have to do that on weekends, and there are not a lot of weekends, especially when the DEP does what they do. The problem stems from this January 15th to May 1st, because all the burning is compressed within a very few weekends, and so the litter just accumulates and accumulates and accumulates. The burning should be allowed any time of the year, subject to, you know, the fire department's okay, so forth. But there are perfect days in October, September, November, and December, when there might be a couple of inches of snow on the ground, and there's no danger of the fire, you know, taking hold. The rules regarding burning should be under the control of fire chiefs, not the Department of Environmental Protection. When they write their regulations, they are not based on science at all. They are simply bureaucratic conscripts, and we need to contact the representative and our senator and ask them, please, to have the oversight committees look into this and make a change.
I don't have a problem with that at all, Peter. There's a lot of them that infringe on things that doesn't seem to make any sense. I would have six inches of snow on the ground, I don't know how much fire could be going out there in the woods, but that's not my call, so I don't...
Well, you can. With a foot, it's a little difficult, but you can. The problem is, it accumulates year after year after year.
Right.
And if you walk in the woods, it's a sad thing.
Maybe we can discuss that. We've got two, the representative and the senator coming. Maybe we could voice our concerns at that time.
Good.
There's a little bit of a way around that. A cooking fire is allowed all the time.
Yes.
So I do the old...
Cooking fire, you can't have more than two feet.
Yeah, it's small, contained, but you can burn some wood, and if you put the hot dog on the stick, and they, you're covered.
See, we cook for four hours.
I mean, it's, you can have a cooking fire.
You can.
Yes.
But if you look at the amount of material...
I know.
It's not a viable thing.
Right, you'll be there, right. And I agree with you, Peter. It's ridiculous that we can't burn outdoor with a foot of snow on the ground.
And it's easier to put out the fire, too, when it's in the fireplace.
Right.
I have a fireplace, and that's exactly what I do, is...
Oh, I have an outdoor fire pit for cooking.
Yeah. So we'll bring that up, Peter, with Senator Moore and Representative Curros. Any more announcements? Or we move on? We'll move on to Mr. Hathaway's gravel permit, 155 Laurel Street.
We still have Citizens Forum.
I'm sorry. All right.
Hi, Joe.
Hello?
Good. I actually still got your thank you card you sent me, by the way, back from last year. Just wanted to show that to you. Anyhow, so I'm here tonight. I was actually going to go over some other stuff, but a quick change of plans. So basically, I was here on January 13th, and we had a discussion about putting me on the agenda regarding the citizens complaint that was given to the town manager's office on January 26, 2012, that is still not resolved. So I guess there was some confusion about me writing up the agenda or something or other, because there was another meeting, I guess, that was supposed to be, I guess, January 27th. That one got canceled, so anyhow, so I do have a Board of Selectmen agenda request for a discussion regarding the citizens complaint the town manager's office received in 1/2612. So basically, I'm asking if, what is it, two weeks, Monday, February 24th, we work out, or basically doing, just doing like we had, you guys, the board had discussed before, picking a separate day for that or whatever, so... So this is, I'll hand this to the chairman. If we could touch you just to Chairman Rice and Vice Chairman Frisk. The other document that I'm going to hand out up here, I was actually going to show two video... I was actually going to show two videos connected to the complaint from January 26, 2012. One, there were two Board of Selectmen DVDs, one being 8/13/2012, and the other one being 11/7/2012, and I was going to show a quick clip of Sean Hendricks and Tim Rice having a conversation, and also Sean and Peter Bagazarian having a conversation regarding that. So since I just found out from Sean a few minutes ago that he has done something different with my complaint that I wasn't aware of, so I'm not being allowed to show the videos, but I will hand this in to the chairman to keep that on record of the actual videos and, you know, as the times. And basically, what I was going to do was to, because, I guess, let me start this way. One is, there's that complaint, and I want to say one thing. The complaint, I might have misspoke at some point in time, the complaint is actually not, and I should have, and I am going to apologize, for Lieutenant Peter Remrick. I keep saying the Emmer complaint, but the complaint was against the Oxbridge Police Department. And it was that I had gone to them, they discovered some discrepancies and some issues, and there were some problems, and they were going to investigate it, but then they didn't because somebody stopped it from being investigated, because it was, the investigation would have gotten too close to somebody connected with a former Board of Selectmen. So after, so the reason why I filed the complaint in January of 2012 was after discussing with Lieutenant Emmerich and Sean, was to take that complaint and set up a meeting between me, Sean, and Emmerich to sit down, discuss the complaint, and from Sean and Emmerich told me to do two things. So one was a, right here, was a citizens complaint, and I'm only explaining this because these complaints were turned in before Jennifer, before Joe, before Lance, even before Tim. So in Bagazarian, actually, you weren't here either, so none of you actually knew that Sean had these complaints in 2012. So this was the actual complaint to Sean of what he was supposed to do with it, and then this was called a criminal complaint, and then this was supposed to be turned into the police department, and I gave him all the information, including where, how to conduct the investigation, where you need to subpoena the records from. I called the place, gave them the names, addresses, people, and everything else to get to the bottom of it, and this complaint's been going around in circles. So the reason why I wanted to show those two DVDs, which before you people got here, I was, Sean and I are apparently not getting along at the moment, so they don't want me to show the DVDs, but those DVDs are of Sean speaking to Mr. Bagazarian, where Mr. Bagazarian, this is all the way back from 11 of 2012, where Sean promises Mr. Bagazarian and the whole entire board, "Give me two to three weeks more, I promise I will have you done a report back to the board." That never got done. And then the other DVD was August of 2012, where there was a discussion between Mr. Tim Rice and Sean, and again, wording came out. Sean's like, "Well, I'm sorry, I didn't document as well as I should have, I should have done this, I shouldn't do that, I didn't bring them both in the same room, I talked to Mr. Emmerich, but I didn't talk to Mr. Brill." So those two videos show that of basically what's going on, and I just wanted to tell you guys that now, because, one, you haven't seen the videos, because you weren't here at the time, so... So I was going to show them on my laptop and let you at least listen to the audio, but with a disagreement with Sean, he doesn't want me to show them to you, so...
I don't make that decision. Michael, I don't make that decision. That decision is made by the chairman of the board.
That's what I was going to say, Mike, is that this was a discussion, and we were both in an agreement with it, and I went along with the no videos, so I don't think Sean should take the heat for that.
Oh, okay.
But I do feel that we've kind of been over this, and we've got to really have a meeting where we can get this discussed and all, and get it over with once and for all.
Oh, absolutely. I agree 100% with that, yes.
It's gone on long enough.
Right, yeah. And so basically, so what I'm interested, so there's now two issues. One is the complaint is still in limbo, and then the other thing is about Sean, is, I mean, I just don't watch it. Obviously, if you watch the videos, you can see what Sean says and how the board reacts, and, you know, and he told Mr. Bagazarian, when Mr. Bagazarian made a comment back saying... And, you know, and he told Mr. Bagazarian, when Mr. Bagazarian made a comment back saying, you're not talking months like before, right? Oh, no, two to three weeks. And that was November of two thousand twelve, and we're in February of two thousand fourteen.
I know, but this is...
So, I think at this point in time is, I would like to be put on the agenda, and we need to discuss and get to the bottom of that. At the same time, these are also the emails, this is a stack of emails between me and Sean about setting up meetings and stuff, so, but that all fell apart, so, so I don't know what's going on. But I feel that transferring this complaint magically now, which I just found out today when I walked in here, transferring it to Police Chief Lori, who, one, was not here, and, and when I spoke to him months ago, he had nothing, Sean even told him about the complaint. So, it needs to be addressed here, and it needs to be on an agenda item. If Lori wants to handle the complaint, fine, bring him in here, we'll sit down, we'll sit down with me, get to the bottom of it. And, you know, I don't know what to do about Sean right now, because now I'm interested in filing a complaint against Sean, so.
Before you file any more complaints, Mike, let us, let us get this discussed, and I'll answer you in writing as to what meeting, you know, that you can come in, and we can give you the time. But the forum tonight at the citizens' forum is not really the best place to be bringing it up. And I know that you've had the resort to it, but I would appreciate if you would just give us another fourteen days. I'll give you that in writing, and I'll respond to you in mail and after discussion with my, with the board and with Sean, and see if we can get some sort of closure on this, because this has just been going on long enough.
Right, no, I certainly, I agree a hundred and fifty percent, right. It just needs to be, so what needs to be done shortly, respectfully asking, is, get me a date for a meeting, whether it's a regular meeting, or we pick another special day or whatever, you know, that it be a regular, will have to be, well, regular or special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I'll be here, and then if whoever we feel else needs to be invited, whether you want, originally, Sean had said at the January meeting to have Chief Lori come and Peter Remrick, that would be obviously helpful, because asking me the question and saying, well, what did Emmerich say? Well, if he's not here, so if all of us were together, we can get it done once and for all. But if I'm not put on the agenda, this is just gonna drag on.
So, let me, let me just get back to you within two weeks in writing, Mike.
No, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Just give me the date and the time for that meeting, and we'll go from there, so.
Okay.
All right, that's all, thank you.
All right.
Question.
Yes?
Don't go away.
Yes?
You mentioned criminal complaint. What's a criminal complaint?
Well, that's actually, that's actually what was discussed when you and Sean, and you were having that conversation on that, at that Board of Selectmen meeting on eleven of two thousand twelve.
Okay. So, you have a criminal complaint against...
What it is, is that, yeah, and the other thing, too, is I don't even know how, these are, these are the copies I gave Sean back. So, I actually have the complaint back, and I've had it back for over a year, so I don't know how, I don't even know what records are here in the town. But anyhow, yes.
If you believe that someone is liable criminally for something done to you...
Yes, correct.
We're not in charge of it.
Oh, I know that, right, right, correct.
Go to the magistrate's office at the district court and just say, I want to have a criminal complaint issued against so-and-so. They'll listen to you and, you know, but we're not in charge of criminal complaint.
Oh, I know, right, no, that's why there were two packets. One was a complaint to Sean, which outlined the complaint about the police department. And then this packet was supposed to go to the Exbridge Police to give to the computer forensics officer to actually get the records to conduct the investigation. So, this, so this criminal complaint is not against the Board of Selectmen, or it's not against Sean, per se. This was suppo, that was part of the meeting that we were supposed to have with Sean and Emmerich, whether...
Who was the subject of the complaint?
May I just interrupt for a second? I'm just concerned about the fact, if there is an investigatory investigation going on or any such matter in referring to a criminal complaint, how much discussion should we have out here in public?
Anything you want.
Michael can say whatever he wants.
The point is, there is, there is a procedure for having a criminal complaint issued, and that procedure does not involve the Board of Selectmen. If you have a criminal complaint...
Which I have, which I have advised Mr. Brill, and, you know, the other thing that, you know, Michael and I disagree, Michael wants to tell me, tell the board, tell the town how to conduct investigation. That's not the way it works. We conduct an investigation the way you do, so the fact that things didn't go where he thought they were gonna go, or the way he wanted them to go, that's not a concern of ours. We conduct, the town conducts investigations in a professional manner, all right, the way the town has chosen to. The citizen, the complainant doesn't, has no standing...
Right.
...to opine on that, or to say, well, you should have done this. So, him to submit and say, well, you should have done this with this particular complaint, that's not, that's, there is no complainant discretion here, right? So, the complainant submits the complaint to the town, and it goes from there. And as was mentioned to him to face, and we spoke about it in November at that meeting, was that clearly there's no jurisdiction here when it comes to criminal complaints.
Okay.
Right, and that was actually discussed, right, but the whole purpose of this pile was to be given to the police department, and this was the evidence for them to conduct the criminal investigation.
And again, the police department, or the DA, or the magistrate determines what is evidence, and collects evidence.
Right, that's, right, that's correct, right, because in this...
You, nor the Board of Selectmen, have the authority to tell the police department how they should conduct...
No, I'm not telling them. This packet, when I met with Sean, this packet, Sean says, I will, when you, when Emmerich and you or I are together, he says, give Emmerich this, because I gave this to Sean to give to Emmerich, which was supposed to go to the computer forensics officer at the police station, to basically do subpoenaing of records to find out if a crime legally existed or didn't legally existed. But you had to subpoena records. And that's when I called the company in California and talked to the legal department, and I even listed it in here, the name, address, the fax number, and everything, to subpoena the records, to get to the bottom of it. And then once you have those records, and that's the Exbridge Police's job to do the investigation. But that's the reason why I have this packet, was because Emmerich tried to do a criminal investigation internally, and it involved, it involved sensitive people, so he felt...
Mike, we're trying to just resolve it as much, we've heard this, you know, a couple of times before. And basically, we, like I said, we're gonna have to sit down and set up a meeting just for this.
Right, yeah.
And I'm very glad that Sean's here with some legal background, because I don't want to get involved with interfering with an investigation. So, why don't we just wait, and I'll write to you within two weeks to set up an appointment and a time and a meeting.
Right.
And we can get this trashed out once and for all.
Right, right, yeah. And the only thing, the last thing I have to add is, on those two videos, Sean says four or five times, at least, that this complaint has nothing to do with my lawsuit, it's totally a separate matter.
Okay.
And, but what I found interesting, Mr. Bagazarian, is when Sean and I talked recently, two weeks ago, whatever, he said that town council didn't want me being put on the agenda. And I said, what are you talking to town council for? I said, this, he says, your own wording had said this had nothing to do with county council. So, I don't know what's going on behind the scenes, but obviously, the, this whole issue is just a pushy subject, and I don't know if there's a motive behind it or what, but obviously, it's starting not to make sense to me, where, you know, you know, January thirteenth, yeah, January thirteenth, I'm here, and everybody seemed to be in the greens, yes, you want to hear what you have to say, we're putting you on the agenda. And then Sean's now talking to me about, Sean's calling town council, the police are all over talking to the town council, and I'm like, you know...
That's really just...
So, it's just, seems that, you know, it seems like people are skurrying behind the scenes, so it's just, I don't, I just don't get it.
Lance, you got it. Lance has got a question.
I feel like you're, this is the wrong forum. We're not the judge, jury, or, I don't know what your goal is with us, Michael, or what we can do for you. You don't, gravel permit, I've got a list of things that I do as a selectman. I can't put my hands around what, what I can do for you in this, in this forum. I think you need to be at Southern District Court, down the street. I really do.
Right.
Because we're not gonna get anywhere, we can't, I don't have the ability to process what you're telling me and take that information, and it's out of our hands, unfortunately. It, it, I can't...
Well, no, I understand from your perspective, yeah, but this was a citizens' complaint to the town manager, January of two thousand twelve, and it has not been resolved, so...
Not to your satisfaction. It has not been resolved in the manner you would like to see it.
But the issue is far, as far as the...
There's a distinction. We have had conversations, I have reported to you, we've had plenty of conversations, I've spoken to the board about it. You're not happy with the way it was resolved, but don't mischaracterize it, right? You've got my words, whatever, you've quoted me half a dozen times here now, right? And as I said, substantiate what you have to say, submit a complaint about me to the chairman of the board, all right? I request you stop quoting me here, right? And let's, let's be clear on this. This has been addressed with, you're just not happy with the outcome, and I understand that, all right? But let's call it what it is.
The whole point is, you mishandled the complaint.
In your opinion.
In your opinion.
It's not in my opinion, because on the DVDs, he admits that he didn't do the complaint properly, he didn't record the notes, and he doesn't remember what Emmerich said.
We've all made mistakes, Mike, and Sean's no exception.
So, this whole issue was over, so now, the second level is, the town manager has not done anything about it.
All right.
So, I mean, should I file a complaint against the town manager for not handling the complaint?
I think we should discuss this at a later date. I'll give you an appointment within fourteen days, a meeting, and to resolve this.
Okay.
So, we can just concentrate on this.
Right, as long as it's a meeting, that's all I care, so.
All right, you got it.
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Nice seeing you, Joe.
Thank you. So, let's see, Mr. Hathaway, gravel pit renewal. We're gonna, wanna do, Mr. Hathaway, all right, if we take this out of order, we'll go back to the streetlights, and, all right. So, the gravel pit, everything seems to be in order with the gravel permit.
So, yep, in your package, you have a renewal for the gravel pit operation on 155 Laurel Street.
Mm-hmm.
It's been reviewed by the inspector and recommended for renewal.
Any deficiencies that were mentioned in the inspector's report...
They have been met.
Have been addressed and have been satisfied. So, anybody have any questions in regard to that?
Costs four hundred dollars for a gravel removal permit, re...
We'll get to that later.
Renewal is four hundred dollars?
Yeah.
You gotta sell a lot of gravel to get your money back for the...
Yeah, yeah. We, the town in general, not only the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, other committees in town, we steal from people. It's outright theft when we set our fees.
All right.
No, I didn't...
Well, we can prorate this one for a couple of months for him.
Let me just make reference to Ben's letter of the thirteenth. And this came up last year, too. He says, this is Ben, "As was the case last year, the annual report did not indicate whether or not the material removed was from the existing stockpiles on new excavation." It doesn't make any difference. We have no interest in that whatsoever. You need a permit to remove from the parcel. A property owner is completely free to move material from this part of his property to another part of his property. That's none of our business, none of our concern. So, I'm surprised that, and this is the second year that Ben has mentioned this, he doesn't understand the bylaw. Now, then, it says, as was, going forward, I am requesting the applicant to provide an updated plan sketch identifying the active areas on the site, areas of new activity and new restoration completed during the license period. As evidenced by the attached GIS plot, it appears there is some encroachment outside the prescribed gravel pit boundary.
I was gonna talk.
The property owner is free to move any part of his property from one place of his property to another. We're not in charge of that. You don't need a license for that.
Your point is taken.
The point is that there is absolutely no reason to have an eighty thousand dollar engineer, head of the DPW, going out to do these things. It is a complete and utter waste of time, energy, and money.
You got the town meeting coming up, put an article on, and...
Article for what?
Take him out of the job, if you want.
The job was put in by the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen designated him...
Oh, you can do something about it, but the man is doing his job, what are you criticizing?
Well, it's incorrect. He doesn't understand the bylaw. Are you happy with that?
I'd like to know, you explain the bylaw, every bylaw that comes up, you've got something to go against it.
Well, is it valid if I, if I make a comment, is it valid or not valid?
Are we gonna give him a discount, because he's not getting a full year out of his permit?
Well, as far as I know, we haven't stopped him from removing, from operating his permit.
Oh, okay.
Right?
All right. I'll just assume leave it up to Ben, and whatever he puts in the report, I can disregard what I feel is not pertinent to me, and...
Tim, that doesn't make sense.
It doesn't.
Whatever somebody puts in the report is okay? If it's clearly not in conformance with the bylaw, why is that okay with you?
Well, how was it, how was this...
I just explained it to you.
How was it not in conformance?
Ben is concerned about stockpiling.
Oh, this is ridiculous.
We're not involved in stockpiling, Tim. Do you understand that?
Look, can you take the dirt out or not? Yes or no?
Say it again.
Can he have his permit?
He has his permit, yes.
Oh, he hasn't done it, has he got it yet?
We're gonna make a motion, or you...
All right, I was gonna entertain a motion to grant Mr. Hathaway his permit for 155 Laurel Street.
What we're doing is renewing his permit.
I'll renew it, all right?
As a matter of fact, we shouldn't even be voting on renewals.
Oh, of course not, of course not. But in this particular case...
When you renew your driver's license, do the registry of motor vehicle people sit down and have a meeting and say, well, is this person driven okay this year? That's an administrative function. If all the requirements for renewal have been met, it should be an administrative function to issue the renewal. We shouldn't have to have a time during the meeting to do it. It just doesn't make sense. That's why we waste time doing nonsense instead of attending to business we should be attending to.
All those in favor of granting Mr. Hathaway his permit, renewing his permit on 155 Laurel Street?
We're not ready for a vote, there hasn't been a motion made yet.
That's what I'm calling for, is the motion. I don't make the motion, the chairman doesn't make motions. He calls for the motion. So, based on the information I have in front of me, I'm calling for the motion to, unless you're all done, do you want to add some more?
No, I just want to assure Lance that you're absolutely right, the fee is outrageous.
Outrageous, absolutely.
By law, by state law...
That's why nobody's doing it.
A fee issued by a town, a municipality, is supposed to just cover the cost of what it takes to administer the renewal. And in no way does it cost four hundred dollars, no way. But people put up with it, and the board is happy.
Joe, would you like to weigh in?
I, Joe Frisk, make a move that the board approve the application for a gravel permit for 155 Laurel Street, map forty-three, parcel thirty-five, thirty-five.
Second. Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Frisk is an aye.
You're all set, Mr. Hathaway? All right. And the streetlights, we had a meeting, Sean, Jen, myself, and Mr. Russell from National Grid in regard to the lights. We found out that it's quite expensive to try to put up LED lights all over, but there's gonna be some concession, I hope, between the board and the department, the Board of Public Safety, to get some of the lights back on wherever they're needed. Maybe we can come up with some reflectives in the dark areas, and so that at least the traffic on the back roads are warned of corners and curves and whatnot in the road. But we are gonna try to get some lights back on. I can't say that they're all coming on, but we're gonna do the best we can.
So, it, do you want to change the policy? I thought what you wanted to do was review the streetlight policy.
No.
You don't want to review it?
No.
But you want to change it?
Well, I like to see some lights. Well, I, I'd like to see some lights. Who, who puts the lights on?
Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, all right. We'll review it, there'll be Jen, Lance, and we can all sit down and talk about the lights after we decide which ones we're gonna put on. And then if you don't agree with that, then we can discuss it and eliminate the light. And I think public safety.
I thought you said that you, Lance, and Jen are gonna decide what lights to put on.
No, no, I didn't say that. We're, we're all, the board is gonna decide it. I mean, we may come up with recommendations, but it's gotta be a vote of the board.
Okay.
Unless you wanna go around and pick out some lights that you feel should stay or should not stay? I mean, your input is welcome as much as anyone else's, Peter.
You know, if you see something that, that simply doesn't serve a purpose, the first step, you have to check to see if the town is paying for it, because sometimes it may be a light that the town is not paying for.
Right. I think there's three of those in town. So it's, I don't know how the board is gonna do it, if you're gonna be out there at night, or do you want Sean and myself? Sean's schedule is pretty heavy, but I'm willing to look at it, and you guys, anybody interested in looking at the lights? I'll do it. All right.
At, in, at nighttime, when you're driving on curvy roads.
Yeah.
You can see the headlights of a car coming reflected on the telephone lines and power lines. You'll note, if you notice, you'll, you will see that clearly, you can see where they are. On many streets, the power companies put these reflective strips on the poles, which is very helpful.
Right. We were discussing that tonight.
So it's gonna look at over the next couple of weeks.
But a, a fifty watt bulb, twenty feet in the air, does very little for anything.
And in the read file, you'll see that there's an updated list of streetlights, so if you have any questions, just let us know, and we'll reach out to Bob.
Oh, we have a list.
Yep, mm-hmm, so it's in there if anybody has any other questions.
If you don't have a list, I have one here, that.
And there's a copy in the read file for everybody as well?
Okay, all right.
And there's a streetlight policy folder in there for past.
Do you wanna copy this?
I have a copy.
All right, I'll mail it out to Joe. Streetlights, Spring Annual Town Meeting, there's a timeline that's been made up by Tracy and Sean, too.
Yeah, so we prepared this timeline of the events that will happen over the next couple of months for town meeting and warrant, and basically, we're looking for the board just to acknowledge the closing date for receipt of articles and petitions for the Spring Annual Meeting warrant of May thirteenth. That closing date would be Friday, March fourteenth. The town manager's office will be open, Sean and I usually here on that day.
There are some things I'd like to see on the warrant.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Relative to the warrant. First, we control the warrant, nobody else.
Right.
Board of Selectmen controls the warrant. The financial data, I think, should be in a type that people can actually read.
You know.
So tiny, people can't read it.
I know, either that, or we have, or we should have to start handing out magnifying glasses for people who have trouble with vision.
Also, we do not have a public safety department. We should go back to the, the standard where we show the budget of the police department, the fire department, and other departments, and not group them into public safety or human services. Name the, name the department, and let's look at the budget.
I think that's a good point, Peter.
And the third point is, get rid of that initiator. There is no initiator. There's a sponsor.
Right.
Which is whoever asked that the article be on the warrant, either the Board of Selectmen, or multiple member body, or a petition, that's gonna be the sponsor, and get rid of that initiator, because we look foolish going to a town meeting and says initiator is the Board of Selectmen when we had nothing to do with initiating it. You see, just get rid of it.
All right. I don't have a problem with that either, but I do agree that this should be broken down into departments in the category that it's going into exactly, and not just thrown in a big pile and voting for the whole thing.
Okay, so in the next couple of weeks, if anybody has any more thoughts or comments to how they want us to compile the warrant, we'll do so.
All right.
And we'll focus on getting it tight.
So Peter, you just want sponsor, and then, and then the recommendations, right?
Yeah.
We have a new policy, or that we've been looking at a policy for street naming.
So, excuse me, just make a motion to set the closing date for the warrant.
Make a motion.
I move that the board set the closing date of Friday, March fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, for receipt of articles and petitions for the Spring Annual Town Meeting warrant of May thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here or none? Take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Frisk is an aye.
Thanks.
Got you, Joe.
Okay, and the street naming policy, do you wanna?
Yep, so in your packets, you all, you have a new policy, it's not necessarily new, it just needs to be updated and reinforced, a street naming policy and regulations, and this is just to help when a subjecting comes forth before the planning board or any other board for a street name, so forth, they get approved by the Board of Selectmen, who are the street name authority, and they're approved in conjunction with the Public Safety Committee, to make sure there's no concerns overlapping with street names.
All right.
And this is, they'll do this prior to they get, to they get to the plan when they do a definitive subdivision, and so everybody's on board and knows what to expect of that street name.
And this will help with that the street name will get registered at the time that the subdivision does, that, that the definitive plan does, so there won't be sort of, we have a no-name plan getting registered, and the street name being assigned afterwards, which has been an issue here, so.
Road A, Road B.
Sort of gonna get the cart pulling the horse, instead of sort of the other way around.
And the fire department and the ambulance, too, sometimes, you know, they still Road A or Road B, and when they get called out there, they can't have that kind of, they gotta have a little more guidance than, than just that.
So this helps with all that, basically.
So, entertain a motion to accept the, uh, street naming policy as amended?
Second.
Uh, we could have a motion first.
You wanna make that motion, Lance?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded.
Do you know where, where I, thank you, Sean, very helpful. I move that the board adopt and endorse the street naming policy and regulations.
I'll second it.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Today's date.
Today's date, okay. Second.
Joe seconded.
Jen actually did first.
Gotta be quicker, Joe.
Yeah.
Photo finish, but she just beat ya.
Any further discussion in regard to this matter? If not, we can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Frisk is an aye.
Thanks.
And the February newsletter for the Board of Selectmen is out. Don't rush, we got plenty of copies. Another good issue. Thank you.
It's in your packets, and it'll be posted on the website tomorrow.
All right.
Maybe we can sell ads and get some rub.
That'd be good. Good luck, I mean, there's ads on the TV, on your computer, you can't do anything on Yahoo without an ad popping up, we may as well do the same. Any further discussions for the board to bring up at this time?
Member issues, you mean, or?
Yes, member issues will be fine, Peter.
Okay.
Are we, are you skipping a?
Town manager update?
Meetings. We got some meeting minutes to.
Oh, we got meeting minutes.
Are you going out of order, or are we just, are you?
We're just sort of riding around, but all right, why don't we, no, no, it's no problem at all, Sean, no problem. Let's take up the minutes next, the minutes of January thirteenth. Any questions in regard to the minutes?
Yeah, question on, on the new business, paragraph number five, review FY fifteen nineteen capital plan, I guess there was no action taken?
Nope, no.
Okay, that's fine. It would be helpful if, when we take no action, just if we indicate that no action was taken, so we'll know.
There's no action, everyone's fine on the capital plan.
But. And under member issues, cable advisory committee meeting minutes and so forth, I did get some minutes, and I read them. And what struck me was, keep in mind, it's a cable advisory committee. If you read their minutes, they are working, operating as a operating committee. They're talking about hiring a lawyer, they're talking about starting a nonprofit group, which of course was tried several years ago, and almost got, some people landed in jail.
Works very successfully in Shrewsbury and a few other towns.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if you do it properly, yeah.
If you do it right.
However, the advisory committee, by definition, is an advisory committee.
Well, I think it's.
And there has been no advice from the advisory committee whatsoever, and I think some of them have forgotten that a municipality is in fact a tax-free, tax-exempt organization.
Well, I don't think they're, I don't think there's any intent of them to go out on their own, I think they're discussing it among themselves, and I think what they're gonna do is bring it to the Board of Selectmen for, for the discussion. I don't think there's, there's any, uh, cowboys getting on their horses and going out there and doing some independent, uh, form of a charter or?
What I gathered when I read what was given to me.
Right.
I mean, clearly.
Well, it's, if we, if anything was said to mislead you, I'm sure it was unintentional, but nobody is going out on their own without coming through the board.
Well, that's good. Also, on the member issues, it says zoning bylaw revisions, Mr. Rice is working on the zoning bylaws.
Right.
Do you have anything?
Mr. Frisk, and myself, and Lance has agreed tonight also to look them over to get another confirmation.
But do you have anything yet?
No.
Oh, okay, okay, that's just my question.
Okay.
Okay, because first, Joe was working on it, then we found out he wasn't working on it, then somebody else was working on it, you say you're gonna work on it.
Right.
To date, nobody has anything.
No, I've gone over, I think probably about sixty percent of the, of the regulations, but to be honest with you, Lance and Joe could, I, I don't wanna even say anything until they both looked at it.
What are, are they, my question is, is there anything that we can look at?
Not yet.
Okay, that's fine.
But I'll see what I can do to expedite things. I'm sure Lance can look through it, and I'm saying, I'm saying Lance is because he's out there, and he knows, he has to abide by him, right?
Mm-hmm.
So he has to know him, and he's gonna know something that probably is not necessary, and that's what I'm trying to.
But my question was, is there anything, the answer is that we have nothing yet.
And Joe is still a, a member of the, of the zoning board.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think I, all I can do is write it up, and you guys can jump in and correct me and straighten it out. Before we submit it to, um, further scrutiny at the town meeting. They, we'll have to go through the town meeting, the regular, okay?
The only other thing is my last comment. At our last meeting, a long time ago.
It was.
I asked members, how, how are we doing as a board?
Yeah.
Because I wanna tell you honestly, this is the worst I've seen.
No.
Maybe I'm wrong.
No.
I wanna, I want you to tell me what your opinion is of how we're doing.
It has been the practice that they, everything went through the chair, now it just goes through whoever is available, and whoever wants to. And if that's the way it's gonna continue, then it's gonna be chaotic as usual.
What do you mean by everything going through the chair?
Well, the, sometimes, uh, things get on the agenda that I'm not aware of until I pick up the agenda. I don't see it any sooner than you do.
The chairman sets the agenda. Now, people may request that something be on the agenda, but it's up to the chairman to put something on the agenda.
Well, that's why Tracy's been dragging me down here every Thursday morning to make sure that that agenda is, is printed before, you know, is ready for me to look at, and has always abided by any request that I put there.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know.
But the board itself doesn't have an agenda, you see? And we've never had an agenda. And if you.
Well, what's the surprise then?
If a board doesn't have an agenda, if, if we only address things.
You mean an agenda as, not in a piece of paper, you mean an agenda as in a mission?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, what, what, what would the board like to accomplish? That's the board's agenda, and we don't do that.
Well, I'd like to see an agenda that works toward reduction in taxes. I think a one dollar and something increase is kind of a, a good kick. I'd like to see some sort of a reduction in the way we do things, the, the number of people involved in what we're doing, and see if we can work that way to bring it down. But my, my only goal is to primarily to act in the best interest that I feel is for the community. I got nothing to gain, I'm.
But that's, we all have that, but that, that's a general concept. You accomplish that.
Not always, it's not always the concept.
If a goal that we want to accomplish, what do we wanna accomplish? I get up in the morning, I have ten things I wanna do, if I'm lucky, I'll get to two of them.
Bull. You get them all done.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do.
You farmers are all alike, you do too, you get the whole thing done.
But we don't have an agenda. We, we, are, are you happy with, with what we're doing?
No, not, no, not at all.
Are you happy with what we're doing?
No, no, I don't think, but.
You happy?
But what can we do?
Well, gee whiz.
Well, now's a good time to bring it up. What do you wanna do, Lance? What do you wanna do? And Jennifer, as well.
The, we can't even take care of, the town manager, in the end of December, asked, said, my evaluation is a month past. We haven't even taken care of that.
That's right.
And, and shame on us.
Yeah.
Um, speaking of the best interests of the town of Uxbridge, we need to do what we need to do with the town manager to either, to, to give him a sense of direction of where we're going. It was on the agenda on one twenty-seven, it's not on today's agenda. That sends a message to him. It clearly does. It was on the agenda on one twenty-seven, it's not on the agenda here. I don't know if the gentleman's got seven resumes out or none, and that's not my business. My concern is the best interest of the town of Uxbridge, and we need to act on that. That's a simple, you, you know, and I, I know Mr., the chair asked me about zoning and stuff, we can't even take care of our own housekeeping.
That's right.
Uh, and that's, that disturbs me, and I'll tell you straight out, if we lose this town manager because of our inadequacies, shame on us. Because the last thing this town needs to do is go look around for another town manager.
Let me give you a little flashback, just to last year's Board of Selectmen, before the May election, okay? We're in the same situation. We were late coming up with the, um, evaluation, we had the same kind of silly format that is worthless, completely worthless, and, um, Kay Hill, what's his name, I forgot?
Jay.
Jay, was a very smart guy. You remember? He wanted us to do a quarterly evaluation. I mean, we couldn't do the annual one, right? So he wanted to come up with a quarterly, that's crazy.
Right, right.
But it all stems from the fact that we, the board itself, doesn't have a plan.
Well, I had a plan when I saw the agenda come out, and I sent out an email Friday, and I, I never got a response. I, I. No, I know you did, Peter, and I wanted to respond back, but that doesn't answer my question.
Yeah.
Um, I know you did, I know you did respond, um, but that bothers me. It bothers me, and, and I'm not the town manager, so it would, I guess, it should bother the town manager more than it bothers me, um, you know?
And Tim, you shouldn't wait until Thursday to see what's on the agenda. I mean, as soon as something, something comes to your attention that. soon as something, something comes to your attention, that people wanna be on the agenda, get the information.
I've never denied anybody that wanted to get.
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying, like, denying something, you're missing the point completely. The more time we have to look into something, hopefully the better decision we'll make when the time comes.
Well, I know.
But if we get things Thursday night, for a Monday meeting, um, town hall's closed Friday, what do you do to get information? Nothing, because you have to rely on what's given to you, and that's not the best way to make a decision. But if you know something, that's gonna be on the agenda, that's gonna take something, uh, say, fine, but, you know, give us what things you'd want us to look at, and let's have a couple of weeks to look at it, unless it's an emergency, but there shouldn't be a lot of emergencies.
And sometimes Tracy doesn't get the information until late Wednesday, so that's why I come down on Thursday, so even if you had it, the agenda on Tuesday, it wouldn't be any good, because it's gonna keep changing.
That's okay, but to the extent that we know X is going to be on the agenda, is going to require a vote of the board, the more time members have to get the information, ask questions, you know, the better prepared we'll be.
And really, the only effective way, I think, to do that is to close out your, you know, your, do an administrative closeout of, you know, a date of when, you'll say a week before the meeting, we will accept, what, what's the date of our next meeting, twenty-seventh?
Yeah, we normally do that.
Twenty-fourth. No, you know what I'm saying, so we will accept agenda items until the twentieth.
Yeah.
If it comes in in that, then you'll, then, you know, the resident, provided it's not a, you know, a, you know, urgent issue. We just have to wait for a subsequent meeting, which just gives the board a chance to, and we don't always like to do that, because we feel as though, I think the board, doesn't always like to do that, 'cause then the board tends to feel as though it's not being as responsive maybe as it could to the residents, we feel like we wanna, they're here, we wanna get them in on the next meeting.
Depends on what the issue is.
Things are always in the refile, at a minimum.
Yeah.
A week or not, if not two weeks before your meeting, at a minimum.
But I, I come in way before the meeting, and I ask, um, Tracy, you know, is anything coming up on the agenda? And she'll say, well, I got this, and this, and this, okay, fine, at least I know about it, you know?
And if you don't see it with me, every week your refile corresponds e- email to every one of you.
But the agenda's not actually the agenda until it's approved by the chair on that Thursday before the meeting, so, you know, in theory, it could change.
But as far as evaluations, Lance, every, everyone that I've seen in the past has always been, you know, late January or early February, uh, and it's, and the town manager's contract is good until the thirtieth of June. Um, last year, that we tried to get his, his notification, that if he was not gonna be reappointed, a four-month, um, notice. I can see that that's a valid request, and possibly we should consider it for the, the next contract, um, but, you know, I didn't get Sean's evaluation until the twenty-second of, uh, January, Sean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, I know, you weren't sure if it was being asked for.
Well, and my evaluation's not part of your evaluation either, I think I didn't realize you were waiting on it, because my evaluation has, is not part of the board's evaluation.
Right.
So I sort of looked at them as separate processes, so.
Yeah. Oh, you're quick with that.
No, I'm just saying, I didn't, you know.
But anyway.
I'm gonna give myself higher scores.
That's it, that's it.
Come back to the meet in minutes, did anybody make a motion?
Just don't make a motion on the minutes.
I move that the board approve the one thirteen fourteen meeting minutes.
Second.
No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
So, how many meetings before the elections?
Uh, five, I think, five or six.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
For, when we're doing the town manager review, are we gonna be doing the contract and the raise, or?
I don't see why not, Jen, I think that we can do everything next week, you get all the paperwork in front of you, uh, I've given you, everybody a copy of everybody's evaluation, um, I'm not writing the summary, um, you can read it and make your own summary out of it, and we can vote on the contract, and we can vote, I think, on the pay raise.
No.
The evaluation would be in public session.
Right, and the contract would be.
The other negotiation would be in executive session.
Okay.
Right. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Did you distribute the envelopes?
Yes, I did, everybody's got an envelope, and I'm, got one in the mail to, or are you gonna take?
That's Joe, you'll be in the mail.
Tracy will be mailing yours out to you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any further?
I just had a couple of things.
All right.
If I may, um, so, just, uh, the budget process is ongoing, we're on schedule for submission or whatever, sort of find final numbers at the end of this month, taking the boards, you know, after consultation, the discussions with, with the board and all the department heads, uh, it's worth noting, the school committee, the school department's, um, public hearing for its budget is scheduled for tomorrow night at the high school at seven, so if anybody has any interest in that, um, I don't know, I imagine the, does the, does, does the school committee generally vote on the budget following the public hearing, or is it the meeting following? I think they're gonna approve their budget.
Yeah, they could wait another meeting.
Maybe tomorrow, I'm, I'm not sure what their plan is.
Yeah, it could go either way.
Well, when does it have to be submitted to you?
They need to get it to me, their plan is to get it to me a week or two, a week before, I think they're gonna try and get it all done, 'cause they don't, they're already, it's already be their.
Their next meeting's not until the first Tuesday.
That's what I'm saying, it'll already be their second meeting of this month, so I believe they're gonna probably have the public hearing, vote on the budget, and submit it to me probably next week, or today, right?
Yeah, 'cause their next meeting wouldn't be until Tuesday.
I need to have mine done, I'm looking at the twenty-fifth to the twenty-sixth of this month, so they need to get it, and they don't wanna meet again, from what I can, from what the chair, from what I can tell, from the attitude of the chair, he'd rather not have, have the committee meet again. Um, currently in contract negotiations, actively with the firefighters, I am participating in the school negotiations as well, I'm in contact with, um, SEIU, ASME, and the mass, mass cops unions as well, actually, I'll be meeting with the police officers union on Thursday this week, um, so, 'cause all of those collective bargaining agreements expire in June, so we are, um, start, starting down, down that road, which is, and so far, so good. Couple of events going on in town this week, um, the Department of El- Elementary and Secondary Education is performing its, you know, sort of full program audit of the school department this, this week, um, so DESC came in today, met with the business manager and some school officials, um, DESC will be meeting with, uh, with me and the finance department on the municipal side tomorrow afternoon for, for an hour and a half, um, I think this is a, something that the school department, that the superintendent scheduled sort of as a, as an effort to sort of, see if we can sort of get another sort of independent look at their operations, and see if there's any way, obviously, that, um, you know, they can save some money, or operate more efficient, efficiently. Um, the town's audit folks, Melanson and Heath, the company that takes, that does our annual audit, will be in town the last week of Feb- February, as they usually are, so they'll probably be working in here or down in Lower Town Hall, whichever is warmer, I'm guessing, um, so if you see them here when.
Shit, this is warmer.
It's pretty frosty down in Lower Town Hall, so.
It's pretty frosty right here, don't you?
No, comparatively warm, so, um, it's obviously, um, Jennifer and the chair know, like, attended the MMA conference a cou- couple of weeks, weeks ago, so I saw you there, I think it was good, I was, I was glad to see a couple of selectmen there, you got to meet town council and, you know, meet a couple of people from MIA, I think, and MMA, so, you know, I think it's good for us to, I think we had a good contingent there, you know, which is good, so, um, what do you think I meant by that?
Um, you got two new hires?
Yep, what do they mean by that?
You're out next week.
Next T, oh, out next week, she wasn't even there when I wrote this, and she knows my, she knows my mind better than I do. We do have a couple of new employees, we were able to, uh, I was, I was able to hire a part-time conservation administrator, I think I mentioned the last meeting, that the inter-municipal agreement sort of fell, fell through, um, we were able to get, um, she doesn't go by doctor, but she's Dr. Kristen Black, she's a PhD in environmental science, um, she's started with us like a week and a half, two, two weeks ago, so she's stepping right in where Jennifer Steele left off, she's already had him, had a meeting with, with the commission, it looks like things are, you know, going in the right direction, so it, it's good to have that sort of, you know, professional support, especially since the conservation commission has experienced some turnover, so, you know, a couple of longer-standing members, Dave, Lou Con, and Larry Lunch stepped down at the beginning of the year, right, so we have a couple of newer members, so I think having that sort of additional expertise in the Wetlands Protection Act, and the Riverfront Protection Act, and all, I think is gonna, you know, is gonna help the board, especially given its relative money to day, if you will, with the new members. Um, and just last of all, just for me, personally, I'll be, Monday's, Monday's a holiday, so town hall will be closed.
President's Day?
President's Day, um, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna take a couple of days on Tuesday and Wednesday, so I'll be back in next Thursday.
And then just the new planning zoning administrative assistant?
Oh, crap, I forgot Beth, yes, we were, um, our planning zoning conservation administrative assistant who works upstairs next to June in the plant, in, in the building department, Amy DiBattista, she left us in the middle of December, um, to go on to sort of, I think she got a full-time job, so, um, we went through the interview process, and, um, actually former select woman Beth Pittman was, was the last candidate standing, so she started last week, and that's a part-time position as well, so, so, um, insofar as the positions exist, you know, our staffing plan over the last couple of years has changed here and there, there've been a couple of, you know, folks who left, and we were able to fill those full-time positions with part-time positions where we could, um, so, insofar as that goes, um, town hall is, um, quote-unquote, fully staffed, with our current staffing plan, obviously, it looks a lot different than it did six or seven or eight years ago, right, but.
How many people are in the treasurer collective and the accountants office combined?
Um, one, two, three, six.
Six?
Is that all?
And then there's payroll and benefits.
Oh, that's extra.
Well, they're separate, right.
And we have two full-time auditors, right?
I'm sorry?
Auditors?
Oh.
Uh, I'm sorry, accountants.
Justin Cole is the town accountant, and Nick Federico is the assistant accountant, yes.
Doesn't say assistant, it says accountant.
Assistant town accountant, yeah.
And then there's two part-timers, and then two full-timers.
And a secretary, they, they hired a part-time secretary too, for the two accountants?
Two part-timers and two full-timers, assist, and then assistants in an office.
It's amazing.
I know.
That we have all this electronic computer to make things easier.
Right.
And.
And the programs aren't cheap either.
No, no.
On the wet town website, it says Justin Cole, town accountant, Nick Federico, assistant town accountant, just.
I don't know where I saw it, but if I see it, I'll bring it in.
Yeah, yeah, make sure you let me know, 'cause we make those corrections, every now and again, there's, uh, you know, some threads hanging, so.
How about the auditors? We've had the same group all the time, do, do you think we should change auditors, uh, to get somebody to take a fresh look at the books, as opposed to having the same people coming in every year?
Actually, it tends to be helpful and less time-consuming when you have, companies tend to stick with the same auditors, just because, you know, they're more familiar, and there, there actually aren't, municipalities have fewer options when it comes to hiring auditors as well, these competent auditors, you know, as opposed to, you know, auditors that go into, um, private businesses, you know, because of the municipal finance laws and, and all, I think there's a certain level of expertise. I'll certainly ask the finance department, you know, why we, if, or, you know, why we have stayed with Melanson and Heath for as long as we have, and I can get back to you on that, you know, and find out if there's any.
Does the Bureau of Accounts, uh, under DOR, do they still do audits?
No.
On request?
They're, no, the expectation is that the auditors that are hired by the town are gonna be experts in the DOR regs, which is one of the reasons that a lot of, you know, with, that a lot of accounting firms or auditing firms, right, that deal with private businesses, don't deal with municipalities because of the, because of the bureaucracy that Peter is always, you know, sort of railing about, there's always a lot of this, so many layers.
And the audit is pro forma at best, I mean, they don't, it's not a forensic audit, they're not looking for something, they're just.
You're right.
It's random, it's sort of pick and choose.
A lot of money spent for nothing.
Yeah, but we have to do it, you know, on a choice, yeah.
By law.
And if we did, if we did, and I can't remember what the price tag is, it's probably a neighborhood of ten thousand, but I know, there was some talk about the school actually getting an independent auditor coming in to do a full sort of forensic, and it's just the cost is, you know, it could be fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars, it's just the cost.
But the cost of doing something wrong too can be very costly.
Yeah, and I don't, this, when it comes down to this, we're not worried about.
The kind of audits that they do won't catch those things.
Well, they can, they can, they'll hand, they'll, they'll catch, they may catch illegalities, they're not looking for illegalities, what they're looking for is sort of violation of standard accounting procedures, right, which have been allegedly tested through time and practice to be their practices, their standard practices for a reason, right, and of course, that could, there's, it's, it's open to negotiation, but in the process of maybe illuminating some inefficiency or some process that's not exactly right, it, that's where you may stumble upon, upon an illegality, but yeah, you could absolutely[1749.41]